Okay, the June 21st, 2017 meeting of the Oyster River Cooperative School Board to come to order. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. We have a couple changes that you should have had that information via email. We have a number of nominations coming up later. We have a resignation, and I believe that's all the new material, right?
Yep.
Then, in addition to the approval of minutes, we never approved the May 17th minutes because Michael wanted to review the first part of that meeting. So we have to add that. And Kenny, I think you have a suggestion about adding something after the public comment?
Yes, I'd just like to add just kind of a special announcement, which is maybe new to the school board, but do that after public comments and before approval of minutes.
Okay, so you must not say what it is about or just... Okay, is that agreeable? So there'll be special comments. Any other changes? Okay, with those modifications, do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Right.
Denise?
I motion to approve the agenda.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Michael. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The agenda is approved. Public comment? Comment, hearing none. Okay, Kenny, would you like to take the floor?
Sure. I'd like to just read something, and I think tonight's a very special night. Tonight is Dennis Harrington's last night as principal of Maharamit and being at a school board meeting. So just to read a statement, "Where did journeys start and where did they take us? Tonight, at this school board meeting, we say goodbye in some realms to our respected and beloved elementary school principal, Dennis Harrington. Many of us know the compelling story of Dennis's time while in the Peace Corps, spent in India, and his project geared towards establishing a distribution system for eggs that benefited impoverished rural residents. A relationship that he formed with a young boy is cited by Dennis as being instrumental in developing his commitment to all children and their betterment. I suspect, however, that the spirit of altruism, sensitivity, and empathy, as well as social justice, was already a defining part of his makeup and deeply ingrained. We have been privileged to witness Dennis's journey with the opening of Maharamit's elementary school and all that has transpired over these years. In a conversation that Dennis and I had maybe one-on-one half weeks ago, Dennis iterated to me the value of synthesis as people come together in the attempt to solve problems and improve their sphere. It is a strong emphasis on seeking collaboration that has made Dennis such an effective leader. As part of these processes, he is able to remain open-minded to contrary or new ideas, and by doing so, the group arrives at a better solution, and one in which all are invested. However, when the time might come to firmly implement a plan despite a lack of agreement or consensus, Dennis is able to do so in a way that does not undermine the dignity of others and in doing so facilitates acceptance. One last quality of Dennis's character that I want to highlight is his high morals and sense of fairness. It guides all of his interactions, whether with students, staff, or parents. It drives him to make Maharamit better, this community better, and ultimately the world better. Dennis's contributions have been enormous, and just as we watch a chapter of his journey close, we see the pathways beginning in those eager kindergarteners who are learning and growing in such a nurturing and stimulating environment. We saw it two and a half weeks ago when graduating high school seniors returned to Maharamit and walked down its halls. We see it in how Dennis's wisdom and outlook have influenced his decisions we make at this school board table. We thank you, Dennis, for all that you have done. As you have modeled, it is always important to be continuing the process of learning and growing. We wish you the best for these next steps in your life, and as there you go, we as individuals and as a school district and school district community will move forward, often utilizing what you have taught us."
Do I get to say something? I have one little thing for you, Dennis. Don Murray used to hand out, and you may have one of these, but you're going to get another one, these laminated strips to anybody interested in writing as you're interested in moving forward with writing. It has a quote from Horace, "Never a day without a line." So there you go, that's your mandate going forward, Dennis. But I want you to have this, it's kind of a heritage of Don Murray. Have this, put it on your desk, and "Never a day without a line," Dennis.
I have a little memory of that phrase.
There you go.
You know I have to say something. One definition of creativity is thievery, so I'm going to engage in a little thievery tonight. Based on a high school senior at graduation, this is the second-best school board and the second-best principal that I've ever worked with. The first-best was, of course, the school board and superintendent who hired me. But I must say, and I've said this, you might have seen me staying here some nights when I didn't have to, because I was here in less-than-graceful times and watching all of you do the sometimes boring deliberation about particular issues. I would certainly sometimes be bored stiff, and then I would step back and realize what was happening. And it's democracy, representative democracy at its finest, mutual respect, the ability to disagree without being disagreeable, the ability at some point to come to conclusions. It is such a treasure to have been a part of this administration in the last three years, essentially. And keep it up. This is a great school district, and knowing who you are and who he is, it will get better. And the single most important thing that is true is there is no fear in this school district.
Thank you for everything. So we have the approval of minutes, and so we need to approve the May 17th minutes. At that last meeting, we made our revisions of them, but Michael wanted to take a look at them because you weren't there for the first half and they weren't uploaded, I don't think. So are we all ready to approve the May 17th minutes?
No.
You okay with...
Yeah.
I have one more correction.
Okay, one more correction.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve the May 17th regular meeting minutes.
I'll second.
Okay, and you have a correction?
So the correction, I think, is significant. On page four, under the discussion items, the vote for the school board meeting schedule for next school year is incorrectly documented. It's listed as 6-0. And I think, given the fallout from that meeting, it's important to get it right that it was 5-1.
Okay.
Who is against it, Michael?
Maria.
For the change in the scheduling.
Are there corrections to the May 17th minutes? Okay, with that correction, do we have a vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The May 17th minutes are approved. Can I have a motion to approve the June 7th minutes? Denise?
I motion to approve the June 7th regular meeting minutes.
Moved by Denise, is her second? Seconded by Al. Are there corrections to that?
I have a couple of corrections. If you go to page four and go, maybe it's a little bit halfway down before the bold type that starts with Michael Williams, we're talking about the Siemens, and it goes, "School board members asked how this was going to impact future facilities, budgets, whatnot." And there's no, there was an answer that night, but their answer isn't in the minutes. And I think that should be in the minutes.
What should be in... Do you have a priority?
I didn't have a chance to look at the tape, and I didn't want to put words that someone else spoke, but I think Dr. Morris, you mentioned what that was. And then on page six, so we're involved in the discussion about math, and I asked about V-Lax, and I'm trying to replay in my mind, but it says, Todd Allen replied that some kids are doing great with V-Lax in their entry back into school. Offered program is smooth, but I think we also heard that there are kids who are going to be laxer and are having a very difficult time with re-entry. So I would want that added. And I would also like added that we talked about the math lab and how the math lab had not been fully staffed, and that going forward, it is going to be fully staffed with a math teacher who will be able to address all subject matters. And I think it was also important to note the program that's going on in the middle school during the summer that is helping to bridge kids that might need that extra help as they're moving on from that Algebra I setting.
So you can, where exactly do you want to... And what exactly do you want to...
It's where the V-Lax discussion happens, Laura. I've written it down. So just put in your notes where the V-Lax discussion happens, and I'll put these points in with Wendy.
Are you okay with him putting that information in?
Definitely, yes.
Was that, was that what I was...
Yeah, the summer piece, which is so important that Kenny is talking about, is we have over 200 students willing to take summer programming at the middle school, not just for mediation, but also for acceleration and support so that they're ready for the fall. So it's a pretty incredible turnout by students.
And both that and the math lab are such tremendous boost to supporting what we want to do, so I think it's important to document that.
Got it.
I have a question about just how we did not approve the May 17th minutes, is that right?
We just did.
Right.
No, no, I'm sorry.
They were listed in here.
We tabled it.
Right.
But I think that the minutes should indicate that the vote, let's see, Denise, I think you basically withdrew your motion.
I did, yeah.
And we tabled the decision on the...
On the top of page three, right.
Top of page three, yeah.
We didn't vote, it was...
Right.
Yeah, okay. So it should be something like...
We postponed.
Oh. Denise Day, you know, withdrew her motion, and the decision on the May 17th minutes was postponed. Now, are people okay with Jim inserting that information, or do we want to like just hold off and approve the minutes next time? Are you okay with Jim? I'm fine with it. Are you okay?
I'm fine with...
Okay, okay. Okay, with those changes, could we, we have a motion to approve?
We already have a motion.
What?
We already have a motion.
We have a motion.
So we just have to vote.
Okay. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The June 7th minute, regular minutes are approved with those changes.
Okay. And Chair Newkirk, I'd like to ask that we postpone talking about the non-public meeting minutes for the June 7th meeting.
Because there's a question you have?
Question of them, yes.
Okay, okay. So unless somebody wants, has any objection with that, we won't bring those minutes up. Is there some issue with those? District comments? Any district? No? Board comments? Denise?
So we have many, I don't know, I haven't actually counted the number, of teachers who are also retiring and other, actually, other staff in the school district who have served the district for many, many, many years. And so I just thought it was important to read their names, and I apologize if I mispronounce anybody, because a few of these I know very well, but others I never, my son never had, so I don't know. They include Stephen Lord, who's a foreign language teacher, Joseph Sacks, the district school psychologist, Danuta Richards, the school nurse, high school school nurse, Susie Renner, language arts teacher at the middle school, Diane Trae...
Trae.
Trae, social studies teacher, Paula Roy, middle school counselor. I know her quite well and did a wonderful job with my son. Deb LeChance, math teacher, Susan Campbell, life skills teacher, Sharon Strickland, special education teacher, Barbara Achetti, language arts teacher. Those were all at the middle school. And then at Maharamit, Helen Kemp, special ed teacher, Dennis, Anne Riley, grade two teacher, Jane Windsor, grade three teacher. And then at Masway, we have Deb Kay, kindergarten teacher, and Michelle Parsons, kindergarten teacher. And I think we should just recognize them for all their wonderful service to the school district.
My daughter had Susie Renner in second grade, and I remember they built this great stegosaurus that they called Spike. My daughter has good memories of Spike.
And Susie Renner, too, yeah.
Other comments, commendations or gossips?
I'll just, because when I looked down that list, it's kind of amazing, because, you know, some of them survived three of my kids going through, which is amazing. And I wanted to point out specifically Diane Trae. In the last week of school, my wife was in there making Shima, which is the Zambian version of polenta, as they were talking about Zambia, and she's done countless stuff, raising money for Haiti, and just has a true wanderlust of the world, which really is in the wheelhouse of my family. And I think it's, she's really kind of opened up the world for a bunch of kids, so I think she's, you know, it's sad to see her go. And the second thing is, just over the last month, watching the diversity and breadth of the Oyster River music program is really incredible. They had the silent movie at Portsmouth, which was really spectacular. In the past, it had just been the middle school, but this time, they did the middle school, and then they moved up to the high school, and you got to see just an amazing growth. And I think back, I can't even remember, four years ago, where we said, okay, we'll add orchestra and we'll reorganize the music program. And as I watched, like, the middle school kids in all the bands here, and then that presentation, and on top of that, we, last school board meeting, we came here, I heard, like, a band that was warming up playing Purple Haze. And then when I left the graduation, they were doing Black Sabbath's War Pigs, and they were phenomenal. So it just, the sheer volume of kids that are involved is just incredible to see. So it was great to, once in a while, I think we do something right, many times.
Right.
Last Thursday, I got the great opportunity just to go to the Masway School. On the outdoor stage, they had Shakespeare's Midsummer Night's Dream, and all the second graders from Mr. McCormick's and Ms. Webb's class memorized everything. And they just stood up there, and they hit it out of the park for about 45 minutes. You got to see the whole thing. The parents were all engaged, the kids were engaged, it was funny, and two kids were sick, and two other kids actually stepped in and actually barely used the script to actually, to fill in, but it was a great opportunity. I'm not a big fan of Shakespeare. I had a hard time with it in college, but these kids, my son now is all into Shakespeare and wants to start reading it, so he's going to outshine me, that's for sure. But it was a great, Mr. McCormick and Ms. Webb did a great job. Ms. Calderon came back after she'd already graduated UNH to help out, and the kids absolutely loved it. So it was a great, great experience as a parent, and I think for the school in general. So it was great.
Maybe building off what Al said, I think we should also maybe recognize our former colleague, Megan Turnbull, who worked so hard and...
And Brian, who's done so much.
Yeah, 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 how much they worked to help promote that and build support for that. Kenny?
I just wanted to mention, I've been out walking the dogs probably before 6:00 in the morning, and just wanted to give a shout-out to our facilities crew, who are out there cleaning up the school grounds and attending to other things while many of us are still sleeping, and the school properties look great. And also, there are people running on the track, which I think, when we envision that track athletic upgrade, we knew it would benefit our athletes, but we were also hoping it would benefit our community, and seeing that happen is very reassuring and very positive.
Others? Okay. District reports, Assistant Superintendent?
Thank you. Actually, just one quick comment on retirees. I was at the middle school retirement party yesterday, and they did a trivia game. The middle school is, the school has the most retirees, they have seven. And one of the questions was, "How many years of Oyster River teaching experience is retiring with this group of seven?" You want to take a guess what it was?
Well, I can add it up.
165 years.
Oh, wow.
Wow, so, you know, pretty amazing. On the flip side of that, you know, I wish the retirees well. We are also now in the process of preparing to welcome in all of the new staff that have come in. It's, Jim has, and you'll finish, hopefully finish the process here in the next few meetings of approving all of the new positions, but we've really done a really good job this year of getting some really young, excited, you know, energy, great staff coming in. We're in the process of planning new staff orientation July 11th, and then a second round in August to really connect them. All of them will be connected with mentors and really trying to make sure we set them up for success as much as we possibly can. But bottom line is, we got some great people coming in, and we're excited about that. A couple of other things I wanted to mention, as summer is coming up, the REACH program is getting ready to go here on full cylinder. We have, as of this afternoon, I checked, we have 264 kids signed up for camps over the five-week camp program this summer. The first week is really our busiest one. We have nine camps running, and they're all jam-packed full. We have Pam Felber talking about music and performance stuff. Pam Felber is trying something new this summer, which is actually catching on quite nicely. There's 26 kids involved in a sticks-and-stones drama camp that's going to take place here at the high school the first week of August. So it's really exciting, lots of kids involved. Again, I just want to emphasize to the community that Doris de Mars is working hard to provide free lunch once again this summer. So any school-age kid who happens to be around the middle school Monday through Thursday this summer and wants to swing by between 11:30 and 12:30, come on in and have lunch. It's free for all school-age kids. Last summer, we had, you know, lots and lots of kids taking advantage of that, so really encourage that. We're also partnering with Durham Parks and Rec this summer, and actually, I'm pleased to report that the, working more closely with us this year has really benefited the Durham Parks and Rec program. In the past, when they've run their afternoon kind of summer camp program, they've struggled to get a full camp, and they have actually, all five weeks, they're full as well. So they're running some great stuff, they're running some great afternoon, Friday field trips as well. So anyway, REACH is really, really going well. In addition, we're in the process of kind of finalizing plans for a lot of the summer professional development our teachers are going to be doing this summer. My predecessor, Carolyn Eastman, started a really great program, Call for Summer Proposals, where we really invite our teachers to kind of take a look at what the district goals are and propose ideas for things that they think would be most beneficial to moving the school forward. And we have 67 different proposals that we are supporting in various ways this summer. Again, I'm trying to put it in quantities, so you, 400 professional days of energy are going to go into various activities this summer, ranging from competency work at the middle and high school, review of our counseling program at the, at the middle school, expanding our advisory curriculum, integrated wellness model at the high school. I mean, I could go on and on, but there's lots of really, really great stuff, and it's coming from our educators, who are the ones that are working with our kids on a daily basis, and they really have a good sense of what's going on. So very, very excited about that. And last thing I wanted to mention is, as I was sitting there, I wasn't being rude with, while Josh was whispering to me, he was just acknowledging that the Smarter Balance individual test scores did officially go out this afternoon, so all of our students will be, or their parents will be receiving a series of emails, because we can't do it all in one email. They'll receive one email that will tell them what they're about to receive, and then they'll receive a second email, which is their math, their ELA score, and then a third email, which will be their math scores. Just so you understand, this is different from the practice that the state has done with the testing in the past. In the past, they've asked us to hold off and not share them until they've completely analyzed all the data, which often leads to a later distribution date. So we don't have comparative data. I can't tell you how our kids did versus other school districts, but all of our students have those reports, and all of our teachers have had access to that for about a week now, and our principals have been reviewing that data and beginning to think about what that tells us. So all of those are things that are happening. So, thank you.
Just, Todd, you talked about the summer REACH program, the free lunch Durham Parks and Rec. My understanding, there might be still a few vacancies in that afternoon with Parks and Rec, and it is getting fall, and I just wanted to remind everybody, too, you don't have to be a Durham resident.
Correct.
Even though it is run by Durham Parks and Rec. So if you've not made plans for your kiddo, and you want to look at that programming, whether you're Madberry Lee or Durham, you're welcome.
Or Newmark, or Rawnsford, or any town you're from, yes. Yeah, thank you for saying that. And actually, I would also say there are still, if you're looking for things for your child to do this summer, we still have slots in some of our camps through the morning program through REACH. So, you know, you can email me or Deb Byrne, and we'd be happy to set you up. So we have been signing people up over the last few weeks as well. Yep, thank you.
Okay, Superintendent's report?
I put a memo from Todd to me in your packet, and I'll just briefly summarize it. So the youth risk survey was done this year. We won't see the results until late summer, and that'll be a topic of discussion, of course, not just with the school board, but with the staff and the community, because we intend to have a community discussion around those results. Tom called me yesterday and asked about the wellness committee survey related to sleep time, and I said, gee, Tom, that didn't come out of my office, so I had to do a quick check. And it was done, and it was done, and we'll see the results of those surveys in the fall. The idea behind that particular survey is to provide a baseline data point for us so that we'll do it again in another year, and we'll see whether the later start time had an impact. And then the last one that I asked Todd to investigate for me was the homework survey, because that keeps on coming up. And that committee began meeting this spring and will be initiating a survey, and I know that the school board itself wants to be able to contribute to that discussion. So before that survey goes out, we'll bring a draft to you, and then we'll have a discussion around it. So those are the, just the issues that are ongoing that I felt like I wanted to make sure we got to report to you this evening about. Be glad to answer any questions if you have any.
Business administrator?
Thank you. I have a couple of items this evening. First one is the budget update as of June 14th, our balance. I'd have to say, this has been a tight year compared to others, but things are looking pretty good. I won't know until next week when we run our final payroll, where everything ends up, but that's the most recent update. Questions? Denise?
Just in terms of the, like, the fund balance, and I think one of the, one of the things that I remember in our earlier discussions about the teacher buyouts was that some of those could come out of this year, or they could come out of next year, the retirement incentives, and I was just wondering how that is shaping up.
We did put them in next year.
Next year, okay.
Most of them are budgeted in next year, yeah.
Okay.
And so I was just wondering, we seem to be doing better than budget at the kind of facilities, you know, the Masway Maharamit. Just some items that caught my eye is that bus drivers, we were 70,500 in the red. Tutors, we were 32,500 in the red, and just wondering how we wound up there.
So in terms of tutors, I believe what happened in that case, we shifted a position from a para position to a tutor position, and we didn't budget the money in that account, but we budgeted, but we expended it where it truly happened. In terms of bus drivers, that's always a wild card, and I really expect, actually, I did a little analysis on that. We kind of guess on bus drivers, I hate to say guess, but we never know what their hours are going to be, so we take an average, and we encumber them based on that average. And we've done a pretty good job every year of over-budgeting. So after next week's payroll, we'll unencumber everything, and I expect that line will probably be a positive, based on my analysis last week. So, and a couple... So, in a couple of cases, it's a little frustrating with our system. They don't do a real good job with the encumbrance on the benefit side either. So, it's always on the good side for us, so I'm okay with that. But I think in terms of the bus drivers, you're going to see that's a positive. I'll bring it back when we finalize everything and you'll probably see a difference there.
Okay. So, it wasn't something that you're worried about?
No, no.
That we should be worried about?
No, not really, no.
Thank you, Sue.
I noticed, one thing that really stuck out was our workers' comp this year was 69% over-budgeted. Do we have some major claims or anything?
No, no, it's a good question. Like we had with Health Trust, we had a premium holiday and it happened for a number of years. Were you familiar with that? When we actually had additional money given back to us from reserves because of a lawsuit that was filed. Same thing happened with workers' comp and we received that for a number of years and never budgeted for it. Well, it just so happens, we budgeted for getting it and we didn't get it. So, that's our actual cost based on our experience, based on a pool that we belong to. In terms of claims, I wouldn't say they're, they're higher than usual, but there are a lot of claims. I mean, it runs the gamut, mostly trips and falls, but nothing huge, so.
So, is that something we budget for next year?
I think we did.
We're going to be on the higher end?
Yes, I think we did budget for actual. What we get is we get, every year, we get an estimated amount based on our experience and based on a number of factors. And we always budget for that. But in this particular year, because we kept getting those premium holidays and all those credits, we didn't budget for it. And the one year we did, we didn't get it. So, from now on, moving forward, we're not going to do that, so.
And is the, do we use a broker or?
We actually use a pool group. It's part of the Primex group where we have our property and liability.
And do they make sure, like, the claims are closed out, reserves set properly, all that stuff?
Yes.
Because that can get costly.
Yeah, and they do a lot of education. And then they actually have a portal that we can go on and look at our trends. And they will contact us if they find that there's an area where there seems to be a trend perhaps in slips and falls and ask us to do some education with our employees on that. So, they're really good at that.
So, they're proactive?
Yes, very active, yeah.
It's all you.
I had a question, maybe Josh can speak to this too. I was, in terms of the technology budget, that it's only 79% used?
It won't be by next week. All right, Josh?
Yeah, we have a couple, we have several items.
Could you, I'm sorry.
We have a few items that are due at the end of the school year. So, I've been feverishly putting in POs for Sue to approve beginning of this week. So, those will be coming out pretty quick.
Okay. Kenny?
The number that Brian brought up caught my eye as well. And hearing that the Primex is kind of looking for the trending, are we doing anything in-house to look to see if there's something we can change to decrease those sorts of workers' comp?
We do, we do. We actually have a safety committee and we review those claims once a year just to see where we're seeing those trends. And, you know, like, it could be something simple as a person falls, three people fall in the same place, well, obviously, we need to do something to that area. It could, you know, ice and things like that. So, those are the kind of things we do. Back injuries, Jim Rozicki is really good with all of his custodians and doing, I think they do every time they meet, they do a little quick tip on safety. So, we do a lot of those, we try to do.
I remember that was one of the drivers with the Muharramit cafeteria, that there was some sort of ramp that they were bringing everything in that was a bit, and I think we addressed that.
Right.
That's great, Sue, thank you.
Good with that?
Okay, so then I have one, actually, one item. Let's do the lot line adjustment. I think you had that in your packet. This relates to the retention pond rain garden that we have over at Massway. So, when we put that all together, part of that is on the Lee Congregational Church property. So, we had to get permission to use their property and they were very agreeable to that. And then after everything was all said and done, we agreed we're going to do all the maintenance on that for years to come. They just felt like it would be worth, much more worth having us own that property. So, they gifted that to us. They did a quick claim deed and we now own that property, so it'll be all of ours. We'll record it with the deed and it'll all be in record that we own, I think it was point, it was a very small piece of property, that point 189 acres that was gifted to us from the church. They're a very good neighbor and it was, I think it would be wise for us to approve that and accept that so we can just record it in the minutes for the future.
We should have a motion.
A motion for that.
Kenny?
With gratitude towards the church, I would like to move that we approve the lot line adjustment at Massway Elementary School that's documented in our packet.
Moved by Kenny, seconded by Denise. Further discussion or questions?
In fact, you say, it's really incredible, the relationship that we have with both the Lee Church and the Madbury Church that are adjacent to our properties is pretty incredible. And in both cases, these churches have worked as best friends almost to the school system. And this is another example of that. You know, not only did they let us encroach on their property, but after reflection, they want us to have that kind, that little sliver of property so that it's part of our property. It's just an amazing relationship and an amazing gift from the church and I just want to say thank you.
They've done great things too, even behind the property where the Cub Scouts actually have built a camp behind there. And they've allowed them to do that. So, those are all mostly Massway kids and they love it. Each den has their own area and they have a campfire and they camp out there a few times a year. And the church has been outstanding in letting them use their facility and their land. So, I agree.
Okay. Ready to vote on this? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The lot line adjustment is approved.
Thank you. And then I have paperwork for the, actually, you have to, we've already approved the lease, but the official approval needs to be recorded in the minute so that we can move forward with the signing of the document. I send it to our attorney, they review the document and.
Which lease are we talking about?
Excuse me, we're talking about the bus lease.
Bus lease.
I'm going to let Josh talk about technology. So, we are purchasing three buses, three Internationals, same buses we purchased in the past. All the details are there, if you have any questions on that. But I do need a motion and approval for that.
Is it purchase or lease?
Lease/purchase. It's a lease/purchase, yeah.
It's purchase, okay.
Denise?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transportation bus lease purchase as presented.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Dan. Further questions? Are we vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The bus lease is approved.
And then the technology lease, I'm going to let Josh talk to you about that one. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Three years ago, as part of our strategic plan for technology, the board approved a three-year lease for laptops across the district. And it is the end of that lease. All the equipment is going back to the leasing company. And so, I'm here to start a new lease for an additional three years. For those who were on the board then, one of the things that was nice three years ago and it remains the same today, the lease rate was actually negative. So, when you look at the total cost of buying the equipment today outright, full price, and doing the lease, we're actually going to save about $41,000 over buying it outright. And it is a fair market value. So, at the end of the lease, all the equipment goes back. We're doing Dell. So, that's kind of the big pieces of it. And we just need approval on the lease to move forward with it.
Just in terms of, you know, making clarification, why it's, why we don't end up paying interest?
I don't see, I don't think we have it.
It's a negative situation for us where, which means we spend less money. It's because they get the used units back and then they resell them, so.
Residual value.
Residual value.
Does that mean this summer you get, like, 600 laptops are coming in?
Yes. We actually coordinated with the National Honor Society for those that are in need of volunteer hours to help us out with unboxing and handing out to students. So, I don't know if Primex covers paper cuts. Hopefully, we don't have any issues.
Are they also helping you box up and return all the?
So, that's, we're in the process of figuring that out. We do have, I know we have some students that are going to be helping us, I think, next week start. Once school's out, we're going to start boxing because it's going to be a significant amount, a couple pallets worth. We're actually trying to negotiate with the leasing company. There's an asset recovery company in Rochester to see if they do on the contract with them so we could just bring them to Rochester instead of shipping them to Texas and save a significant amount of money, so.
How did you arrive at the quantity and the mix of equipment?
What's that?
How did you arrive at the quantity of units and the mix between the different, three different types of systems?
We have, let me see here, it's a total of 642 systems, split up between mobile carts for student use and teacher laptops.
I just want to question, so if we bought them outright, the price is $544,888.
Yep.
We're paying $167,809 for three years, once a year for three years.
Yes.
And my math brings that to $503,627. So, the delta between them is $41,261, which is our saving for three years. Is the life of these only three years or, because if, let's say, we use these for four years and we kind of did what, you know, kind of did that math, if, but in assuming we're going to do a similar arrangement, that 167, 809 times four becomes $671,236.
So, Kenny, what's missing in that is the warranty. So, the warranty is included in the three years. If you add the fourth year, there's an additional cost for the warranty. So, it doesn't quite translate as.
I'm trying to establish whether we do get that, knowing that we're paying less per year for leasing, but if we're extending how long these devices would last and be suitable, are we really not getting a good deal here?
Sure, and I can answer that. At the be, in the, in the fall, when we were developing the budget, I did look at a four year. And once we hit four years, it jumps up to a positive lease rate. So, we don't, we don't have a negative lease rate anymore and now we're paying additional, we're actually going to pay out interest beyond that.
But what if we bought them, instead of leased them, what if we bought them? And let's say we assume that these devices, rather than having a shelf life of three years, has a shelf life of four years.
And what we've been seeing in, on about the fourth year, we actually had, the year before we did this lease, we had special ed funds through IDEA and we replaced all the laptops for special ed. And this was the fourth year, the current school year we're ending. And that's when everything started going downhill. We've had lots of repairs on them, the batteries started dying. So, we've had to spend not a ton of money, but we, they've been out of the classroom quite a few times. So, we've just seen that fourth year is really where things start to take a nosedive and we start seeing an increased amount of repairs, which then keeps the equipment out of the hands of the teachers and the students. And so, my goal has been when, to try to maximize the amount of time that they're in the classroom and that it's not actually disrupting the classroom and teachers are losing time. And we found that three years really seems to be that sweet spot, whereas once we go over that with laptops, and desktop's completely different story, but laptops with batteries and all that, they just, they take a lot more wear and tear over those three years.
So, understand that. And then, I guess the other piece in hearing what you're saying is, rather than doing one fell swoop and then doing a new agreement after three years, what about having staggered phase ins and phase outs with our owning the equipment? Is that an alternative or not?
I think at this point, we probably don't want to hold on to it with the way that technology changes so rapidly. We were actually, you know, the feedback we got from the teachers when we said, hey, we're starting in, you know, the summer, we're getting a new lease and, you know, we're going to be replacing equipment. Everyone said, everything's working fine. Well, we brought some of the demos of the laptops we were going to use and they were significantly faster. And you don't, you don't know what you have until you kind of compare it. So, I think that three years, three years is the good point. We do have actually three leases out there. So, we, next year, when we're building the budget in the fall, you'll see, I'll be proposing another lease for some more equipment at the elementary schools. So, we do have a couple staggered leases, but everything we send back.
Great, thanks, Josh. Great answers, you know, it really helps. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Has there ever been, you looked at tablets versus laptops? Has that been?
So, on the, we actually looked at it this year, convertible notebooks, not necessarily like an iPad tablet, but the teachers are getting convertible notebooks. So, the screen actually flips around and it's a tablet, they'll have styluses so they can write on them. There was a student model we tested and I ended up breaking it pretty bad. And so, we decided that that may not be the best. We let some teachers weigh in on it, try some things out. They felt like the teacher model worked really well, but as you can see, there's a significant difference in price between the teacher models and the student models. So, we're going to start that process because, you know, down the road, I'm thinking it's a lot cheaper for us to be able to do a laptop with a pen versus a laptop, a projector, a Promethean board, you know, all these different pieces. So, trying to consolidate that equipment, keep it simple for teachers to use and also lower the price of it. So, we're starting to test it out and see how it's going to go.
Technology is changing every day.
Yeah.
A year from now?
It'll be something completely different.
All right.
So, I'll move to put forward the technology lease for the devices as listed and three-year lease with the amount expended per year as listed as well.
Moved by Kenny, is there a second? Second to Brian. Further discussion, questions? Are you done? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Seven in favor, the student rep in favor. The technology lease is approved.
Thank you.
Okay, Student Center report?
All right, so, as you all probably know, graduation was almost two weeks ago. And I saw a few of you guys there, didn't, yeah. But, so we heard an inspirational speech from Vala Victorian Dayao Zeng, a very humorous speech, as Sister Anton brought up, from salutatorian Russell Miles, and a heartwarming speech by President Alex Simansky. And then Vice President Alice Berry delivered the class gift, which was donating the rest of the class money to Miss Rayford Memorial Fund. And the faculty award was given to the previous school board member, Caroline Wilson. And I thought you guys would appreciate that one. And overall, graduation was a huge success. And while we're really sad to see our seniors go, they're going to do amazing things. And for underclassmen and juniors, this Tuesday marked the beginning of finals week. And we've currently taken four of our exams and have three more left. And today, National Honor Society volunteers conducted Step Up Day and led incoming freshmen around the high school. It's been a pretty quiet week.
Kenny Jane, how did you feel that Lenholm Gym worked for graduation?
I actually thought it worked really well. I was, I was a marshal, so I got to leave the seniors. So, where I was sitting, it was like not boiling hot and it had enough space, so like, it looked very full. And I think everybody was able to like sit down and be in graduation. It had a nice place for photos, which all the seniors wanted outside. And I thought it worked really, really well, actually.
Good, thank you. Questions for her? Okay, Christina? Thank you for being so patient.
No problem. I'm here with Sarah Larson-Denon, a colleague and member with me on the Sustainability Committee. So, we're presenting the report from our work this year. The Oyster River Sustainability Committee and Green Team leaders were involved in a significant initiative this year. The charge was to create a curriculum map of where sustainability topics are taught across the district. A subcommittee was formed that included our assistant superintendent, two elementary classroom teachers, a community member, and two Green Team leaders. We decided a survey to the staff with the most efficient method to collect data. Clearly defining the word sustainability from an educational perspective would strengthen responses. This was our first goal. Our second was to create and distribute a five-question survey monkey. To define this word, we used Webster's Revised Unabridged Dictionary from 2006, which states that sustainability is management practices that do not take more from an ecosystem than it can provide. The survey then continued with the information from the Natural Step for Communities from 2007. Keeping in mind that sustainability is a term that can be applied to environmental, economic, social goals and initiatives, including a sense of civic responsibility. Think about your grade level or content area. What are you teaching that supports the following objectives? To reduce our community's contribution to fossil fuel dependence and wasteful use of scarce metals and minerals. To reduce our community's contribution to dependence upon persistent chemicals and wasteful use of synthetic substances. To reduce our. To reduce our community's contribution to encroachment upon nature and to meet human needs fairly and efficiently. So in May, the Survey Monkey was sent out to all the staff with a completion rate of 142 respondents. A spreadsheet was compiled of the responses and included in your backup packet. Based on the survey's data, a wide range of sustainability topics are being taught across the district, K through 12, subjects and through courses. Each grade level, elementary, middle, and high school, have their own set of constraints and variables that seem to direct how topics related to sustainability are taught. For example, at the elementary level, topics tend to be taught as ongoing themes, often multidisciplinary, in a cyclical pattern from year to year by classroom teachers. Some topics reported include life cycles of animals and plants, decomposition, global warming, Earth Day, reducing waste, recycling, composting, solar energy. At the middle level, topics tend to be taught within specific subject areas. The two most reported subjects were science, for example, earth science, ecology, water conservation, and social studies, for Native Americans and alternative resources, for example. Topics tended to be taught around specific units by the academic teams in each grade. At the high school level, sustainability topics tend to be taught through individual courses. The responses, the responses centered on courses in the sciences, social studies, and English Language Arts departments. For this reason, instruction about sustainability topics vary since students self-select their coursework. The creation of this curriculum map has given teachers a starting point for discussions about the scope and sequence of sustainability topics. We have two recommendations. The first is that this curriculum map be shared with staff through dialogue, so all lessons in units currently being taught can be included on the curriculum map. We believe some topics are missing. The second recommendation is for teachers to meet and identify where there are opportunities across subjects, units, and courses for the integration of topics not currently being taught. For example, maybe a thread about solar energy could be presented through a nonfiction read aloud, discussion, experiment, math problem, or STEM project across various grades. The Sustainability Committee would like to thank the school board for their ongoing support of our work. We look forward to our next charge and future collaboration with students, staff, and the community. We're ready for questions.
You mentioned gaps or areas that could be covered that aren't covered. Could you say what some of those are?
Well, I think obviously sustainability is really easy to get for the sciences, and we found also in social studies, there's topics that come up, and then English, for those who have the interests of such, to have a choice of writing. But it's those other areas, we saw some math problems. Special ed, of course, supported what the classroom teacher was doing. The responses that we gave in the packet is literally what was told to us, the survey. So I, I kind of would present it back to the teachers to see where they think they could incorporate it. Maybe it's an awareness, they would just be a little more sensitive to plugging things in as a start.
I, I just wonder, just thinking out loud, whether there's, there's a big push now in English Language Arts to have nonfiction reading, you know? And, and so, so much great nature writing is part of nonfiction reading, which would seem to me to be consistent with sustainability. Edward Abbey, you know, John McPhee, you know, so many great writers, and whether, and that's, that's also a curricular push with a common core.
Right.
So there seems to be some synergy there, maybe.
And having that dialogue with all the staff, those who didn't respond would be able to put in their, their lessons, their subjects that they teach, maybe Todd has something to add.
Actually, one of, one of the thoughts I wanted to share with you is, really, this was the first time that we really tried to address sustainability as a curriculum topic, and I think one of the things that became very quickly clear to us was using the traditional curriculum tools that we have. We use Atlas for our curriculum mapping software. The concepts that people were teaching were hard to define. So when you say, like a term like, like if you go in and look for like learning about fractions in the math curriculum, it's easy to find where all that shows up. Because sustainability concepts are, are, there's not necessarily a common core vocabulary to work from, it was very difficult to search. And so that's one of the reasons why we chose to do the Survey Monkey tool, because we started the process of literally trying to look at our curriculum maps and how can we search for this? So one of the things that we very quickly learned through the survey was, there's a number of departments, math, and PE, and health, where they were very clear that yes, there is a lot of potential in our department, but it's not there yet. And I think that's, I, to me, I, when I looked at the results, as I walked away feeling like, wow, we haven't really made this a primary focus yet, and we already have, literally 70% of our teachers are already indicating that they're doing a significant amount of stuff, which was quite remarkable. So there's, there's a lot of these themes, I think the key is, absolutely, there's plenty of potential in, in English Language Arts for that, and you're absolutely right, nonfiction. And we were looking at, you know, next gen science standards and where we can incorporate some of these things in. There's, there's a huge potential here, and I think the timing of this was really good. So I certainly envision, you know, in the fall, this, this map comes back to our teachers with just two very simple questions. What's missing? And where do we go from here? And I, and I really believe that it will come together pretty quickly, so.
Kenny?
Just want to thank you for the report and the work that you're doing, certainly swimming upstream with what's happening in Washington. I really like Chair Newkirk's comment about that nonfiction reading. And see, your activities, you know, you're focusing on curriculum, classroom, I know there's so much that goes on with behaviors outside of the classroom, you know, the way we compost and all that. One thing, just to bring up now, Durham became a, in quote, bee city this past spring, late winter-spring, which means we're supporting pollinators and trying to do everything we can to make that environment friendly. We have our rain gardens, and I'm wondering, maybe that's an area too to focus, to have those rain gardens really for pollinators. And walking past the, the turf field where it, Budco Drive, there was this really, very significant patch of, I think it was Crown Vetch, that was flowering, and it was mowed while it was flowering. And that is such a great spot for the pollinators, and then we mowed it at the peak. So I'm hoping we can start to coordinate with facilities as we have these environments that are really what we want, that we wait till things are done flowering before we mow them, so.
And actually, when you said beekeeping, I immediately thought of Tom Housman, one of our high school Spanish teachers, he's a, he's a beekeeper, and actually, that's been one of the things he's, he's dreamed of, is potentially having a beekeeping setup here at, at the high school or wherever in the district to be able to use it educationally. And actually, they had a, last year, they had a beekeeping club, so there's a number of kids that actually went out and visited the various beekeepers in the, in the area, Maria Barth being one of them, and the kids really got a lot out of it. So it's, absolutely.
And so important, yeah.
Having been on the agricultural committee, I can tell you, for Durham, if you go talk to them, they love bees, and they would be more than happy to help the school. But the other thing I was going to say is, the sustainability, it's a major part of Durham Town's goals itself, and, you know, aside from what they can do in the classroom, that, it's like, the Energy Committee of Durham is incredibly active, and they are a great resource for the students to leave the classroom and get to see some real world applications, I think.
We did a Mastway School with Maggie Morrison, the Green Team organized a solar array field trip to the new solar array on Packers Falls Road, and Charlie Firsty was there, there was an electric car there, and they also took a visit into the veronal pool in the back, and that was all fourth graders at Mastway, and it was highly successful and thinking about doing it as a fourth grade field trip for both schools. So, yeah, Charlie's wonderful, yeah.
I remember at the Mastway earlier this year, in the second grade, they, I believe it was in the fall, they grew vegetables and everything else, and they had, they ended up making a meal for the whole class, or classes, just from the food grown in the courtyard, I believe it was. And my son actually talked about it today, and he still remembers that, knows from the fall, because I asked him, what was your favorite part of the year? And he says, making the home fries, and, you know, they had all types of other vegetables that were made, and, you know, my wife has a huge garden, leaves, got farms everywhere, so I think that went over well, and I'd like to, love to see that continue on, especially when, if you're a visual learner and you see that, that's, that goes a long way.
Every school has a, the school garden, which is run by the, by the teachers, certain classes decide that they want a school garden. And then here at the high school, we have a production summer garden, where a person gets a stipend with community sport, that's, the vegetables are grown for the lunches, for lunch program, school lunch program.
That's great.
I think in terms of the charge for next year, I think it'd be useful if you wrote something to us about where you see your committee going, and then we could, you know, approve that charge. So maybe sometime between now and, say, September, is that a possibility?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't have to be a lengthy thing, you know, but just so that, you know, you have the kind of authorization and support of the board to go forward, so.
Dr. Morris suggested something with plastic bottles, and that may be a little different right now, but we can consider other things as well as bees.
Okay.
And I just want to put one plug up for the community, if you're interested in serving on the committee, we do have community members, students, UNH, UNH students. We had a UNH intern who was also an Oyster River graduate, who finished our ecological footprint, so it's a very cool collaboration with the university. So please, community members, if you're interested, contact us.
And just before we let Christina and Sarah go, the district owes both of you a big thank you. You guys put in tons of hours, it's all, so the world knows, it's all volunteer, all the people who sit on your committee are volunteering. So this truly is a labor of love that you have led, Christina and Sarah, you've participated in, along with so many others, and, you know, the district owes you a huge thank you for your commitment.
Thank you. Team effort, yeah. We enjoy it. It's something we really believe in.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so you have in your, I think both in the backup and, I don't know if it's in your packet as well, but you had the revised board goals. Denise and I met with Dr. Morris, and we tried to incorporate the suggestions, which were not major, but, you know, we, we tried to incorporate the language that was suggested. One thing that, that's a little bit different than the version we looked at last meeting was, I had a 3A and a 3B, which were essentially two different goals, and I just made each one of them a different goal. One was dealt with the competency reporting system in the middle school, one dealt with the high school, and I just made those, since, rather than a 3A and a 3B, I made those, made those separate goals. I think Michael had some, some language issues, which I think were good to be brought up, you know, when I said to authorize and evaluate, I just put, you know, tried to simplify that and make the, the kind of directives a little bit clearer. Kenny had some additions that I tried to incorporate, I hope I got them right, you know, we get those right. So I'm wondering if we're ready to, you know, for the discussion on these, Al?
I just have one about three, because in, where it says, to determine if the eighth grade should continue with the high school system or adopt the sixth and seventh grade reporting system, but when you actually think back to the discussion we had about competencies, it wasn't really to continue with the high school system. The high school is actually working to do competencies, it's to develop a system that has grades and competencies. So it's not the current system, it's a future system that hasn't been developed.
I guess I kind of meant to continue with what they're doing, you know, to, to be on track with what they're doing, that's kind of what the intent is here.
How about if we add the word evolving before high school system? So to determine if the eighth grade should continue with the evolving high school system?
Yeah, because my hope was that at the end of, you know, you know, 2018 this time, that the high school's coming to us for, for the report and saying, okay, we've gone out, we've established what our competencies were, we've looked at other, what other schools are doing, and this is the system we've come up with, and oh, by the way, this is how it fits with the eighth grade. So we're trying to get a system to come forward, that's, that's.
So it isn't like there's a system, a static system that they have. So, so would including evolving?
The word evolving.
Okay.
Where would we put that?
I would put it.
Continue with the evolving.
Right, that next to last line in three.
In three?
Right, right before high school, right after with.
I mean, that, that makes sense.
So I think that you and Denise and Dr. Morris really nailed it with incorporating suggestions, and I'd like to make a motion that we approve the board goals as listed, with just adding that word, evolving, in number three.
And I will second that, there's a period mess, it's just kind of annoying, it's a little thing, but not at the end of five, just to put a period at the end of the sentence. But with that change, I second.
And I'm just wondering, since we're getting specific like that, as my English teachers are, to evaluate the, it's the effect, I think it's really the effects of the change, this should be plural, right? The effects, because it's, in both in one and two?
Yes, you're right.
That's, it should be plural, I think.
Yes, I agree with you.
So the effects, okay.
Is there further discussion with these changes? I think substantively, there's not a whole lot, just Michael?
So there is one authorized left in number eight, and I think, I feel very strongly that number eight is probably one of the most important things on this, on this list for next year. And beyond, beyond removing the authorize and making this be, not just beginning the process that they're developing a strategic plan, but completing that process within the school year, is that the intent of this goal?
Thank you, Michael. So we're actually entering the fifth year of the strategic plan as we start the new year. So in my conversations with Tom, what we saw is the two-phase process, that since we're, we're in the ending year of the current plan, what we would do is set up the process to revisit the goals in 1819. So this year would be, how are we going to set up that arrangement, who are we going to invite into the room? You know, the last time we did it, we had over 100 people having conversations, and then taking those conversations out of this year, and doing what we're doing here, and doing rough goals from there, and bringing those back into 1819, and having this body deliberate on whether those are the right goals. Once you guys have settled, then we would build the goals and the strategic plan around those. So it's a two, it's a two-step process.
So really, the goal is to develop a strategic plan by June of?
1819. So the, the process in 1719, and the plan in 1819.
But I think it's, I think this is kind of the one, one of those things we really want to get right. And I think it's good not to put a drop dead date on it, because I think we want to have a robust process, and if we get it sooner, that's great, but if it, if to do what we need to do, which is community involvement, staff involvement, student involvement, I'd rather see the process be very robust and not feel compelled to meet.
Which is really why I wanted to take it over a two-year process, so.
And so I like that language.
We can begin the conversation and have that rich conversation in the upcoming year, and then start to take that conversation and define it into the strategic plan for your review in 1819 to be adopted. Because if we wait till 1819, we try to do it all in one year, then we, everything will be accelerated at a, at a pace that could interfere with quality. And one of the things that we'd say about the current plan is that it really was a quality document with lots of input, and fine tuning the goals and then building the strategic process underneath that is time consuming. And I want to make sure that we're giving good airtime to the community and, and the staff and the students. So that's really what next year is about, so where are we, where do we want to go as a system?
I think the discussion we had was like whether we should start developing the plan this fall, you know, starting to bring people together this fall, and we thought, given everything we have, that's too soon, we need to take the time to figure out how we're going to develop the plan, and have a year to develop the plan, then the plan starts the year after, so it's have two years instead of one year. That's, that was our thinking, that to dive in this fall felt like really premature, we weren't ready to do that. So, I don't know, so that's, that's the idea.
So that means we won't have a strategic plan to guide goal setting at this point next year?
No.
No, not yet. But we're still, it'll still be the last year of.
That'll be the end of the last year.
Right.
But we should, we should be able over this, next summer, not this summer coming, but the summer after, to take and digest all of that work that we do with community input and rough out the goals, so that we bring them back to you, you guys can then. say, yeah, these are the right goals, or you'll adjust them, so in that, in 1819, I would say by Christmas, we should have the replacement plan, so, what you're saying is, is there going to be a place where there's a vacuum? Yeah, probably the fall of 18, but by the time we hit Christmas, we'll have the replacement plan and be ready to go. The current plan took us about a year and a half to just write.
Right.
Because it was the first, first one the districts had after a fairly long hiatus, whereas this one that we're doing is replacing one that has been very vibrant and very much part of our budget deliberations and our conversations with staff, all of that, so, I'm less, I guess from my perspective, I don't see it as a major hiccup that if we don't have it all fine tuned until Christmas, because we still have the current plan, even though this plan ends, there's always going to be, it doesn't really totally end, because there's always work that has to be done.
Yes, but if you look back at the previous plan, an impressive amount of the, of the strategic plan was accomplished.
Yeah.
I've been involved in strategic planning processes in both nonprofit and private sector several times over the last 20 years, and I've never been a part of a, a, a long-term execution of a strat plan as comprehensive as what the district accomplished over the last five years.
Thank you, Michael.
But likewise, I want to make sure that we're guided by that going forward as well, and want to have as much, as much meat to work with as, as possible, so, so I guess I would, I would move that we amend or modify goal number eight to read, to begin developing a new strategic plan and complete plan development by the end of 2018.
Yeah, I think that's very doable, that gives us the year and a half.
I, I would disagree with that, because again, I go back to, I would want to get it right, and I don't think we're going to be in a, in a vacuum, I think that our philosophy has always been to continue to enhance, and I think that it's not as if all of the things, it's not like this was a bucket list and we've crossed them off, all of the things that were mentioned will be continuing to grow, and I'm more concerned that when that strategic plan comes forward, that it is the best strategic plan we can do, rather than making it meet a deadline, so I, I would not be in favor of doing that, I, I think we have guidance, and I don't think we're going to be out in the ozone, that's how I feel.
So, Michael, can you just repeat your proposed amendment, or proposed change, is it, is it a, I guess my question would be, to Kenny's point, is, are we establishing a deadline, or are we, or are we identifying a goal?
Well.
In terms of timeline?
I think a lot of organizational development folks would tell you that goals should have deadlines in them, that's part of, you know, goal setting is oftentimes has a time-bound component to it, so in my perfect world, I would have just said the goal is strategic plan development by the end of 2018.
So.
But I, I, I hear the interest in, in articulating that we're going to begin that process and over the next school year, but really, the goal is the product that we have at the end of 2018 to guide us going forward from that point.
So, I, I would concur with Michael's general philosophy on that, because, you know, it's, it's, it's a huge process, and I think one of the really critical first steps in establishing that process is to identify your ideal end date, because if you don't, I feel like if you don't do that, you can drift a little bit, and I think what I'm also hearing from Dr. Morris is that, you know, we already have an idea of where we'd like to end up, what it gives me some comfort to Kenny's point, which I agree with generally, is that we're not establishing a deadline per se, we're saying, we envision a process that, you know, develops this, this document and concludes at this time, and I think that's important, if, if there's a, if we discover that more time is needed, I don't feel, and Michael, maybe you disagree, I don't feel that the way Michael has constructed it necessarily puts us in that corner.
I agree, and goals are, we're not chiseling this in stone.
Right.
I'm not promising to resign if we don't achieve these goals.
And we've actually seen that in real life, because we set a firm deadline, and sometimes we hit it dead on, and then other times, lots of circumstances arise, and that deadline has to be moved forward, so, that happens all the time in real life, the strategic plan tries to set up firm deadlines, because it gives you, you know, the momentum, we have work to do, we have to get it to the board by, I mean, if you come into my office, for example, you see the giant whiteboard, and I'm always, where am I going to present it to the board in the course of a year, and, you know, I would say more often than not, it happens during that time, but there certainly is occasion where, you know, I've sat with Tom and Denise and said, we're not ready, and, you know, I'd like to see us do this, you know, three meetings from now as opposed to this meeting, or even in the fall as opposed to the spring, just because, you know, circumstances arise, you know, bringing together, like we did in the first plan, over a hundred community members is a huge task all by itself.
Right.
You know, getting student input is a huge task, getting staff input is a huge task, so you, you put benchmarks in to do that, and then life happens, and you, in my ideal world, I would have the community, the big community meeting, you know, someplace around Halloween or Thanksgiving, someplace in that three-week window between those two dates, because I need the month of September just to generate the names and send out the invitations and get commitments, and, so, when that all comes back, I know whether I have enough people to pull off the, the community, basically touching base with the community in a, in a sampling, because a hundred people doesn't represent 14,000 people either, but it gives me a beginning, and then, so the whole process is very time intensive, and it's also one that can go in directions that you're not anticipating, the only thing I would say exception to Dan is I have no idea where the next plan will go, because I'm not anticipating anything other than listening during that process, and then from that process, generate the next set of goals, you know, that's where the music program came from, that's where all-day kindergarten came from, it's where the counseling program we have at the high school came from, it's where the math initiative came from, and, you know, as Michael alluded to, all of those things, we've been right on top of for the last four years, and, and will continue to be on top of into the next school year, so, you know, if we take the strategic plan, I agree wholeheartedly with Michael, there should be deadlines, anytime I set up a goal, I try to put a date in it, so I know what my target is, but in conversations with Todd or Sue, or, or the principals or the teachers, competencies is a great example, that deadline for the middle school was a year and a half ago, but when I met with the middle school staff, they just said, Jim, that's an arbitrary deadline that we can't meet, and I said, okay, so first of all, let's figure out where everybody is, and that's why, you know, it was a year and a half later that we actually brought it in front of you, because that's where the comfort level of the staff was, and that's why we had 86% support going forward, because I didn't push an artificial deadline, I let them communicate with me where their comfort level was, where they were on a continuum, that's the reality of, of, you know, living documents, Michael and I have had many experiences, I'm sure other board members have had, building strategic plans that are put on a shelf, and then five years later, they're pulled down, and nobody knows why the goals were there, or who was responsible for the work, and, you know, one of the other things that Michael and I have talked about is, I believe in five-year plans, the reason I believe in five-year plans is typically, everybody has a pretty strong institutional memory of the document from year one to year five, but as you push out into say year six and seven, and many school systems do 10-year plans, the reason that I don't like them is, there's tremendous change in a school system, and we've seen it tonight with 15 retirees, and so people are coming in, they weren't part of that initial conversation, so we said, here, we have some people like Christina and Sarah, they were part of the conversation five years ago, so the institutional memory carries forward for about a solid five years, and then it starts to degrade, not because people aren't committed, but because people weren't participants, that's why I believe in five-year plans, and I think that's why Michael's seeing that we got so much done in the last five years, is because people were all players at the table, so, I know I'm being a little windy tonight, so I apologize, but I just wanted to say that I do agree with deadlines, as long as we know that sometimes those deadlines do move, and we just accept that as fact.
I just, quick one, I'm not going to, I just, whenever I set a goal, I just, is it a realistic goal, I think it, I mean, I think you're being optimistic that Thanksgiving or Halloween, to get that up and running is, seems optimistic to me, especially with the budgeting, but realistically, you know, even if it was after Christmas break, and we, you had set, all the groundwork had been set up, and the budget had been done, that when to exist to actually get that meeting done, and then, the second part, remember, was like we had all those, the subgroups, which was like the operational, so, that, getting the time to work on it, so, again, if you got it done, it's early in the wintertime, you did that, that would allow time in the spring and perhaps the summer to get that done, so to me, it seems like, yeah, it's realistic, we could get it done, if it, if something came up, of course, we could always change it, but I, the timeframe itself seems realistic, I also have a bad memory of the strategic plan before this last one, five years ago, where it stretched out infinitum, so I also, I like timeframes, I just want it to be realistic, and I think, you know, again, this seems like a realistic one, but we really, it does demand that, on your part, in the fall, getting this up and running and going and laying all the groundwork that needs to be done to get that group going is, is a big chunk.
It's a substantive change, so I think you need to move that.
I did move it, and then we started discussing it before I could.
Well, yeah, but we already had a motion, did we already?
He's going to amend it, so you need a second.
Well, I still, I connect.
Let me reiterate, Mike, so my motion was to amend item eight, to read, to begin developing a strategic plan for the 2019 to 2024, with completion by December of 2018.
That'd be good. I wouldn't have any trouble with that.
I'll second it.
I don't like to get too into wordsmithing, but if we added the word, or if we defined it as a target.
Yeah.
For completion, would that perhaps?
Yeah.
Honor the?
Yes.
Okay, so, boy, we're getting some layers.
With targeted, with targeted completion by December of 2018.
I think, I think, I think the, the notion of a goal is that it is a target, I mean, it's almost a synonym for target, right?
Yeah.
So, I think what, I mean, I don't think that anything here means that, you know, somebody's going to go to jail if you don't, you know, miss the, miss the deadline, I think, you know.
No.
So, I think, I think Michael's is an improvement over what was here, and I think that, that it gives a, gives a date to have it, you know, things, the five-year plan starts 2019 to 2024, it should be finished by the end of 2018, that makes sense, you know, it gives a, you know, so we're not just beginning something, we're beginning something that should terminate at some point, and that should be starting at some point, so I think it's an improvement over, I think it's a good.
And it gives Jim a priority, because again, like that work of setting this up was a lot of work, if you put that timeframe, it really means in the fall, he'll begin to really.
Right.
Flush it out.
Well, and I think, you know, our, our school year cycle for goals is somewhat arbitrary, really where a lot of these things in the strategic plan get acted upon is in the budget process, so if it's, can be used as an input to the budget process at the end of 2018, I think that's, that's productive timing.
Yeah, good. And so we, so we have an amended, you amended the motion, could you want to read your amendment again?
To begin developing, oh, well, I guess I'm not sure exactly what the.
I'm fine with the original.
I think the original, I think the way you said it's still, still.
The way I read it, most recently, was to begin developing a strategic plan for 2019 to 2024, with completion by December of 2018.
Okay, so that's, you moved an amendment, is there a second to the?
Yeah.
Second?
Yeah.
Okay, further discussion of the amendment?
And I'm sorry, I don't support it, and really with what Dr. Morris said about the competency thing, and I, I think the way we have operated is, we really address the goals that we set with the attention they deserve, and I'd rather see us not have deadlines, knowing that we are working in a very productive and constructive manners, which is different than how that first strategic plan, so I, I won't support this.
And I'm still like, because I'm still trying to figure this out, it, I thought we were not going to have the big meeting this coming fall.
No, I need to have the big meeting in this upcoming school year to lay out the groundwork for conversations with staff, and so maybe, basically, next year, if you think about it, is conversations, I need to have conversations with the community.
Next school year or next, next?
Next school year, in order to be able to build the, build, next school.
School year, okay.
To build the plan for the following year, so I need that information in this year in order to build the plan for you in, in the summer and fall of, of 2018.
See, the way I would understand this is if Dr. Morris comes to us and says, look, we're going to need more, you know, this is our goal, but we're going to need more time because we've had, it's taken a long time to set up this group, we say, well, we revisit it and say, okay, let's, let's just, you know, it isn't like, it isn't like hard and fast, it's a goal, it's, it's like, we're going to try to reach, and if we, if circumstances come up and you say, look, or if there's, there's something else big happens in the district that takes our attention away from it, we'll modify it, I mean, that's, wouldn't that be your sense of it, Michael?
Yeah, yeah, goals are, goals are intentional.
So, it's like, it's like, we're going to try to reach it, if, it's, you know, if we need a little more time, we're going to take it, but it's kind of like, gives us a parameter, and I think if it's going to go into action 2019, it has to be ready, sometimes close to, you know, or else you'd have to adjust that other thing, which you may have to do, but at least it gives us this timeframe to, to kind of look forward to.
I guess my only concern is with the, because we're also trying to focus on the middle school, and having a plan for the middle school by the end of 2018, so, I guess I had thought that the big meeting was going to be sometime after, like, basically, in, it was going to be in 2018, like sometime in the winter, or after the budget season, or, I, I guess that's what I had thought, was that it was going to be more in that part of the, the year, and I'm not saying that I'm, I'm opposed necessarily to it being in, in November or whatever, but I'm just, I'm just wondering if, if that's going to take away from the middle school, because, you know, we're trying to get the, we're trying to actually have a plan for the middle school by the end of the school, by June of 2018, so I guess that's my concern.
Sure, and I certainly appreciate that, and I go back to what Al said, you know, I tend to set these things with rose-colored glasses, because I feel like I can get everything done, and then reality happens, but, you know, you have two major goals, the other seven are really reports, and that's deliberately why we did it this way, and so when I look at reports, for example, I see other administrators taking the lead on the reports, but on these two, I think they belong to me because they're so big, and so, I think I can do these concurrently, Denise, we'll find out, as Al said, if I've bitten off more than I can chew, but I, I think I can, I guess that's basically how I see it.
Dr. Morris, I would think that the wellness initiative rises to those levels and maybe even beyond, confirmed by the power of one and discussions I had with students.
Absolutely.
Based on the sociology, so, and I thought the goal is written with both community and student further involvement, that's another really big one, where I think we're going to get the community.
And I think you're right, Kenny, but I don't have to lead that one, because we have established, I mean, Todd's on that committee, and Heather are head counselors on that, so I see that as more exclusively their work than my work, so when I look at these two, I see these two as my work, and I see these as being.
Totally agree, but it's a, a lot of the work is done by the community, and.
Absolutely.
That wellness one, we're wanting the community, strategic goals, we're wanting the community, middle school, if we don't get the community, it's dead in the water, so, I, I think, and we could, as Dennis said, we discuss, and sometimes we very respectfully discuss, and then we disagree, and I think all of us know where we stand on this, but I, that's where I'm at.
So we have an amendment, we have, which has been moved and seconded, so I'm wondering whether, maybe I think just to have the amendment read one more time, I know I'm being maybe too deliberate about this, but.
Sure.
Did you read it?
So, the motion. So, the motion is to modify goal number eight to read, "To begin developing a strategic plan for 2019 to 2024, with completion by December of 2018."
Okay, that's the amendment.
That's the amendment.
You ready to vote on the amendment? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Six in favor, the student rep in favor, all those opposed, one opposed, now I believe we have to vote on the goal as amended, right?
But before, uh.
I, you can go ahead, I have a.
I have a question about number nine, so.
I have a question on five.
Okay, well, okay.
So, we have to finish eight first.
Let's, let's finish, let's do eight, and then.
We didn't just vote on eight, I'm sup.
You just voted on the amendment, now you have to go back and say, as amended.
Don't you, can't you just then vote, while Kenny's gonna want, do you wanna pull that off, or do you want to do it as a slate, because you wanna vote against, I assume?
I, I think we have to do, as a slate, but if someone wants to make an amendment for five or nine, now is the time to do it, just as we did with eight, you know, and then we get, we deal with the amendments, and then we vote on the full slate, right?
Before somebody makes an amendment to five and nine, let's finish eight, okay? Because it gets really confusing if we don't do it that way.
Well, I think we finished eight.
We did finish eight.
You voted on the amendment, now you're voting on the motion as amended, you have to go back to the original motion and vote it as amended.
Well, the original motion was for the entire slate, right?
Yeah, the original motion was for the entire slate.
Unless you wanna pull that goal eight off, and then approve goal eight, and then go to the rest.
My, my intent was to modify eight within the scope of the entire.
Okay, all right.
And now we'll modify whatever else.
All right, backing up, go ahead.
Okay, so, 'cause I think if, if we're ready to approve goal eight, let's have a vote on goal eight as amended, all right?
We did already, we voted.
I'm confused.
We, we voted six to one, to approve the, to approve eight as amended, right?
Okay, okay.
Because the original motion, I thought the original motion was on goal eight.
No, the original motion was for the whole.
Yeah.
So, other amendments could be entered at this point, and then, once that process is completed, we vote on the slate.
Yeah, I think, my, my sense is we voted to approve goal eight as amended.
Yes.
Is there, is.
No. No, we've amended goal eight, we haven't.
We haven't approved any of the goals really yet.
Then we'll approve the whole slate.
Yeah.
Right, we, we just changed the language that's in eight right now.
Okay.
So, is there an amendment to five or eight?
I just, I have a comment about five, and I, I actually asked that the town goals be sent to all the school board members, you know, when you look at this, in our, our, we send our information out to everybody else, this is what we're doing, and yet, we have almost no idea what's going on in the towns, and it's like, we are the lion's share of the tax bill of those towns, goal nine is a humongous fiscal impact to the towns, I think it's really important that we have a better idea of what's going on economically in the towns, what developments are occurring in the towns, what growth is going on in the towns, again, that has never occurred in, and I know Jim goes to the towns and talks to them, but it's a clear one-way flow of information of us telling everybody what we're doing, we don't ever hear back what, what's going on, I think it's important, when we, we hear what's going on, what are the major budgetary initiatives, is there major construction going on, because it, it really does have a huge impact on our goal number nine.
So, would that be part of an action plan for goal five?
I don't, I don't know how to quite do it, I mean, I think Jim can just implement it, but.
Sure, so, based on Al's inquiry, I did reach out to the towns to find out what their goals were, and the way that Lee operates is, it seems the chair just enunciates a group of goals for the year, and then that becomes what they do, and in Madbury, they don't do yearly goals at all, at least, I couldn't get copies of anything that would be deemed that way, because what Al was attempting to do is for me to be able to kind of put the puzzle together, you know, along the lines he talked about, but I really couldn't base on the information I had, what happens, what tends to happen is, you get into conversations with somebody like Todd, or Julie, or Eric, and they say, "Well, we're gonna build a fire department," or, "We're going to buy, you know, a fire truck, or a plow truck," I mean, Lee was talking about buying a $200,000 plow truck at the last meeting I was at, and so, that's basically, it happens very informally through conversation, it doesn't happen in any formal way between the elected bodies, one of the ways that we might be able to accomplish it is, and I've done this in the past, is have, invite the select boards from Lee and, and Madbury, and the council from Durham, to meet in a joint session with the school system, specifically to talk about, you know, capital improvement projects, and where they see them in the timeline, and so, we, we tried the survey routine, and we really didn't get as much information as we were hoping, but by inviting them into a common meeting in the fall, maybe to talk about what their big, big issues are that they see, could be very beneficial, and maybe they would only send a representative, but it has worked in the past, and it's been quite wonderful.
Another thought I had was that, if, in terms of thinking about the process of building community understanding of the needs of the middle school, it's, and you've, you've created these big committees before, have a, have a, something like a principal, a superintendent select committee that might have representatives from each of the councils, and they would be part of, to review the information, and then they could be conduits of information back to the councils, so I mean, not just have a meeting, but maybe have these people be part of a, a group that, that reviews BLATs, you know, the information he's provided, to really integrate them into that decision.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So, in terms of, in terms of the goal.
So, I think it could be a strategy that we have.
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we, yeah, I, to me, I kind of try to get into a whole other thing, and I mean, I think we, we can look at that as like a strategy that has to do with our communication goal, and I, and I also, the other thing I just wanna say about that is, I think we have to be careful, because, you know, I mean, not to say that we should ignore towns and what's happening in towns, but I also think, you know, our focus is the school district, you know what I mean, and, and I, I don't wanna get into a situation where it's like, okay, well, well, the fire truck will go next year, and then we'll, you know, because there's always gonna be stuff that's gonna come up, you know what I'm saying, come up and stuff like that, but having an understanding, right?
Just having a better sense of what's going on.
Right, which I agree, I, I think is great, but I think as far as our goal, I think it's, I just, I mean, I feel like we're just now, we're start, you know, every, we, we get to a point where we think, okay, we're ready to approve the goals, and then we start over again, which is what happened last year, and I think at some point, we just have to say, you know, the gist of what we want to happen is here, you know, it, we can always tweak, you know, strategies, and, and the way we're approaching different things, and things like that, but, I don't know, I just kinda think we, we don't wanna start getting into, I think, creating like a whole other layer of stuff.
Okay. So, where are we?
Did you have something on five?
I did not have anything on five, except for a period at the end of the sentence.
Just a question on number nine, I guess I'm looking for a little bit more definition of what kind of plan we're talking about by the end of June 2018, with a building project of that magnitude plan could mean a lot of different things.
So, I think that the ultimate goal for 2018, by the end of the school year, would be to settle on a focus, so, for example, right now, Michael, we've investigated K through five schools, we've investigated seven through 12 school, we've investigated relocating, we've investigated staying where we are, we've investigated renovating, and so forth, so we tried to think of every option that's out there, and what we need to do, and I agree with Tom, by having a much larger committee, is go through those options, and think about their cost and benefit, and go down through the list, and hopefully, by the time we end next school year, say, "This is the option we think is the most viable to start talking about for two years," you know, get it down to the one option, so that when we do start communicating, we're communicating very specifically, and, and having a history of having investigated every option, because in our community, as you know, Michael, whatever option you put out there, somebody's gonna come up with a new one.
Oh, yeah.
And so, I tried to brainstorm, and then Denise came up with a new one, the last time we met, so we, we didn't hit 'em all, so it's a matter of, you know, having a, a group of people who are well vested in the community, you know, looking for engineers, and looking for architects, and looking for builders, and having them at the table, and saying, "Okay, let's look at all of the pluses and minuses of every option we can think of," and then, when we get to June, hopefully be able to say to the board, "This is the one that makes the most sense for the district," and then, we'll be talking about exclusively that for two years, before we get to a place where we're ready to ask the voters for anything.
That sounds reasonable, thank you.
So, are we ready to vote on the goals with eight amended, as we've agreed that should be amended, with evolving in front of high school system, and three, and then with the other, you know, just mechanical corrections, are we ready to vote on that? Okay.
And I, I just, I'm gonna vote against them, because I would disagree, and, and then, on the other goal that I really wanted was transportation, and if we're looking at kind of number eight, is, even though there's a kind of a deadline, but it's a moving deadline, by that same notion, I could have seen introducing that transportation one with that moving deadline, so, for both those reasons, one, I don't agree with how eight's been restructured, and then, if we want consistency, to add that thing with transportation, I'm gonna vote against our goals.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hand, six in favor, the student rep in favor, all those opposed, one opposed, so the goals are adopted. We need a motion to authorize a superintendent to offer contracts to qualified teachers and staff during the summer months, and maybe just an explanation of why we do this, because if you have a vacancy that occurs, say, in August, you need, he needs to act, and he can't wait to, to have us have a meeting, and so, that's why we grant him that authorization in the summer, we've done it every summer that I've been here, so can I have a motion? Brian?
A motion to accept authority for Dr. Morris to hire in summer.
Okay, moved by Brian, is there a second, second by Denise, discussion on this?
How many positions are we still?
Well, you know, it's sort of a moving target, so we've worked very, very aggressively this spring, and, and into tonight, to fill all of the retirees, but then you saw Emma retire, resign for next year, and nobody was anticipating that, we thought we'd get another year with her, but unfortunately, we're not, because she's an extraordinary world language teacher, so that happens, so it'll continue to happen, and I think the PE position is still not filled, I think that's the list for right now.
It's just a couple.
The, the two technology integrators, so those are the positions that are open right now, as aggressively as we moved, that's where we are.
Okay, and what he does is that, even if, you make your appointment, you come in and you, you know.
So, what I do, and once I've made the appointment, when we meet again, I just ask the board to recognize the, the decision to hire, as opposed to approve it, since you give me the approval now, it's really just to let you know, I've hired somebody, you get that sheet that you always get, you can see the person that was hired and their credentials.
Okay, moved and seconded, right, Brian, who was the secondaire?
I second.
Second by Denise, ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise your hands, six in favor, the student rep in favor.
Thank you.
Motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School handbook, Denise?
I motion to approve the Oyster River Middle School handbook.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Dan, discussion on this?
This, comment that I had sent Jay a couple of clerical corrections.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor, seven in favor, student rep in favor, the middle school handbook is approved, motion to approve the list of coaches for 2000. I don't know where those are.
I was gonna say, I don't remember seeing them.
It's in actions.
There was a field hockey coach, and an ice hockey men's coach.
A motion to approve.
Oh, okay, I just found it.
Harwood, Barsey, ice hockey coach, and Ann Golding, girls varsity.
Right here.
Coach.
Dan Klein, seconded.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Al, seconded by Dan, what category was it under?
I think it was under the board action, it was the last.
It's under actions, the actions.
Yeah, it was the last one, at the end.
I got it, sorry, discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hands, seven in favor, the student rep in favor, those coaches are approved, committee updates?
There's some additions we have to approve.
Right.
So, we have other nominations.
One resignation for Iris.
Yep.
Denise?
I will, motion first of all, to accept the resignation of the middle school world language teacher, Emma Bricker.
Moved by Denise, seconded by Al, with great thanks for, for work in the district, sure, okay, all those in favor of accepting a resignation, please raise your hands, seven in favor, the student rep in favor, and we have four nominations, is that right?
Yep.
Denise?
I'll nominate, right, I'll do them as a block, for high school, Emily Johnson, speech and language, also at the high school, Alex Satterfield, special education, Massway, Susan Lalbert, Liberty, Liberty, probably kindergarten teacher, and Massway, Becky Bigweather, grade one and two teacher.
If I could just add a little, just comment on, particularly on Becky Bigweather, who's the grade one-two teacher, she is nationally certified, which makes her one of a very select group of teachers across the country, she is experienced, and in multi-age, as well as primary school, so I think she's exactly what Massway needs in this upcoming school year, so I'm really excited to put her in front of you as a candidate tonight.
And she'll be teaching with David McCormick and.
Yes.
They're on web, right?
Yep, exactly.
That's fantastic, it's gonna be amazing.
I just wanna comment on the exceptional number of candidates that applied for both the kindergarten and the grade one and two positions.
Ninety-eight in, what, eighty-six, or eighty-seven?
Yeah, seventy-nine and eighty-five.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty crazy, and a lot of work by Carrie to get to the place where she had two great candidates for us.
Ready to vote on this, this is a group, all those in favor, please raise your hands, seven in favor, the student rep in favor, this group is approved, now, committee updates?
The policy committee met last week, and we had a very lengthy discussion with involvement with staff about memorials, and how we handle deaths of students, teachers in the school district, and I think, much sooner than later, we'll be bringing a policy forward to the ball, the board about that subject.
Okay, good, other committee reports, hearing that, public comment? Nope, just before closing actions, if you just indulge me, because I meant to bring this up in comments, I am going to nominate Dr. Morris for superintendent of the year, I think he's taken us a tremendous distance, those of us that were here five years ago remember where we were and where we are now, this is not something that, that a board, you know, in New Hampshire, my understanding, it isn't something that a board decides, but other members of the, you know, he's nominated by individuals, so if other individuals on the board, particularly those who've served for, for a while with him, would like to also nominate, I can kinda show you what that process is like, but I wanted just to know that that's, you know, that's something I'm gonna do, and I think it's well deserved, and I think he's given us just tremendous guidance, and actually been a pleasure to work with, so.
Thank you, Tom, I appreciate it.
So, that's, that's underway, so I may, maybe talk to, or you could talk to, you know, then those who want, also wanna comment, you know, I can show you how that's done, okay? Closing actions, we have a manifest, next meeting is the sixth of July, manifest review, but that's, that's.
That's just a manifest review, that's gonna be Al and I.
Okay.
Al and I on a Thursday night.
Do you guys wanna do that at Sue's office, like, at the end of a workday?
I, I could do it, that would be fine with me for that one.
Make it easier.
So, what time, what time do you want us to be at the office?
What time are you free, Denise?
What time can you do it?
Oh, I can, I can do it, I'm, I'm on my summer schedule, so I can, whatever works.
Why don't you just email the two of them, set it up soon, it doesn't have to be in the evening.
Okay, then with the regular meeting on the nineteenth of July, okay, so, we do need to have a non-public.
Just before we do, Hannah, you don't come in the summertime, right?
Uh, no.
So, this is Hannah's regular school year, last meeting, and we'll see her in the fall.
Yes.
She won't disappear, she'll be waving to her sister as she drives away, but I wanna thank you so much, Hannah, for the months that you've been here during the school year, and really appreciate your voice, and. the school year, and really appreciate your voice and your intelligent comments and wit.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Hannah.
And have a good summer.
Yes, as well.
And on that point, there was a very lengthy article about boards, whether they're public boards, corporation boards, and it was talking about the dearth of women who are in those positions, and it also did research and specifically on school boards, and it found that boards where women were underrepresented, that women spoke much less and were cut off much more. So two things, in the future, I hope our district keeps adding women, and I think it behooves us to be incredibly sensitive to that reality. So I just thought that was very important.
Thank you, Kenny.
Thanks, Kenny.
So we need a motion to go into non-public. Kenny?
So, under New Hampshire state law RSA 91-8:3, Roman rule two, see matters which, if discussed in public, would likely adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the public body.
Moved by Kenny, is her second, second by Denise.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Dan Klein, yes.